Yeah, um, meeting here one like to call the April 3rd, 2025 meeting of Hopeful Borough Council to order. Richard do the sunshine statement?
I have a quick notice that this meeting has been provided by a notice mail to the Hopeful Valley News and the Trenton Time posted on the bulletin board in Borough Hall and filed with the Borough. Starfish required by law.
Excellent. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hopeful?
Mayor Kennedy?
Here.
Mr. Fuller, Ms. Hook, Mr. Matthews?
Here.
Ms. Steeler?
Here.
Ms. Weaver?
Here.
Ms. Lennox?
Here.
All right, good evening everyone, both online, I know this is spring break, so we have good number of people online and here in person. Before we get to the next piece of our agenda, a couple of housekeeping items. One, a tough one for me in particular, but I'll say as we start this evening, it's my duty to announce the upcoming departure of our absolutely fantastic administrator Doug Walker, effective at the end of July, you know, four months from now. We'll be launching a search committee and using our personnel committees, it turns out it's pretty much everyone at this table plus the rest of council, to evaluate the best options for us going forward. I cannot thank our friend and colleague for going above and beyond for a year and a half, who was really planned to be a part-time position, and we're all so very appreciative and proud of what you're accomplishing here and on behalf of council and our community. I just want to thank you for your continued fantastic contribution, Doug. So more to come on that, but on our transition as well as our search plan to, replace them is not the quite word that I can, I can use.
Nothing special.
I do want to point out, I tried to buy him the cookies and then it didn't work.
All right, two other housekeeping items. This year we have scheduled, both planning board and council have scheduled mid-month meetings throughout the year because of all the work that we have to do. I'm announcing tonight and then we'll do the official sunshine, but that our April, what was scheduled for April 10th Borough Council meeting will be canceled, so our next meeting will be the normal first Thursday slot in May. And the same thing goes for the, was announced at planning board last night, but the April 16th, second April planning board meeting will also be canceled this month to give some of the people doing that work a night off, though not, not all of them, there will be a subcommittee of planning meeting that night, actually. Lastly, last month we continued the public hearing on our grease trap ordinance to this evening. We will, when we get to that point, open up as one of our opportunities for speaking and comment and continue the public hearing. But I'm gonna just pre-announce that I'll be asking for a motion at the, at the end of that part of it to carry the ordinance again for continued public hearing and feedback until our May meeting, and that will be not taking a vote on the grease trap ordinance this evening. And that will continue to the May 1st. So with that, our next items on our agenda, item four, a report to the Director of Public Works and Water in Sewer. If anyone has any questions for our administrator, now would be the time to do so. Seeing none, I want to move next to the next item on our agenda, item five. Excited to hear about this one. Councilwoman Weaver will do a brief presentation about a demonstration project that the borough's been working on with the D R Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission. They provided us with a grant to do a traffic calming project in town as a proof of concept. I'm excited to hear.
And the timeline, so. With that, and Chris, let me know when you'd like me to, I know everyone in the room can see it on the screen here, it's not yet shared to the, excuse me, having a bit of an issue with our owl, so those are online or just looking at me at the moment, and that's not a super pleasant sight, I assure you, so let me try to reboot that. Give me one second here and I'm going to share.
Oh, really?
Yes, when that turns on, it does make that sound. So if you're online and just looking at me, apologies, our regular camera that pans around will turn back on in a second. I'm also going to share the screen so that people online are now seeing what's up on the screen. And for now, we'll try to make this work, hopefully everyone at home can hear and see the screen. I'm gonna, while Councilwoman Weaver is doing her presentation, I'm gonna see if I can figure out why our owl has yielded to my computer camera. So with that, Councilwoman Weaver, you have the floor, just let me know when your need slides changed.
Thank you. So I'm really excited about this project, it started about August or September of last year, right Doug? I can't remember exactly. But we submitted an application to the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission to do a demonstration project here in the borough. And after some back and forth, we decided to do the project on North Greenwood Avenue because it is the only entrance to the borough that, and not a county road. And it is an area that was not really significantly addressed in the Safe Route to School Grant. Slide. Thanks.
I think you're like getting to command.
So over the past couple of years, as many of you know, we have made some strides towards improving pedestrian and bike safety here in the borough by lowering the speed limit for the entirety of Broad Street to 25 miles an hour and prohibiting right-hand turns during red lights at two of our signal intersection. And as part of the education campaign for lowering the speed limit, the Hopeful Township Police Department handed out the flyers up here on the screen that showed the fatality rate of pedestrians when struck by vehicles traveling at very speed. A person hit by a vehicle traveling at 20 miles an hour has a 90% chance of survival. When struck by a vehicle traveling at 30 miles an hour, a pedestrian has a 60% chance of survival. And when struck by a vehicle traveling at 40 miles an hour, a pedestrian only has a 20% chance of survival. And I just bring this up to point out that this is why speed matters. Next slide. So this graph shows the decrease in speeds on East and West Broad Street from 2022 to 2024. This is after the new limit was implemented, the education campaigns concluded, and we increased enforcement. So as you can see, I'm sorry, this is not on here, but prior to lowering the speed limit, the speed limits on West Broad Street were actually higher than the speed limits on East Broad Street. And it's important to note underneath there, that is from the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, that even a one to two mile per hour reduction in average speed is estimated to yield substantial fatal and injury crash reductions. So it may not seem like a huge decrease, but it does actually matter. And slide. So also, as many of you might have heard, Hopeful Borough was awarded a $1.5 million Safe Route to School Grant last year. The improvements included in that grant are adding sidewalks where they are missing throughout town, including connecting the borough to St. Michael's Farm Reserve and King's Path. Adding rectangular rapid flashing beacons at key locations near Hopeful Elementary School and along Broad Street, and those are the signs that you've hit that flash at the library and in front of, what's, what's it called now? Hopeful Fair. Hopeful Fair, thank you, I'm sorry, I just drove past them, I should know that. And then also two overhead flashing lights at the Hopeful Elementary School on Princeton Avenue and upgraded crosswalks near Hopeful Elementary School and along Broad Street. Uh, slide. So the demonstration project location was chosen to act as a gateway as repeatedly recommended by the Greater Mercer TMA Speed Studies, their school travel plan, and the PB SAC County Roads, County Roads Report. Slide, thank you. On this map, you can see the five entrances to the borough. The county roads are marked in blue and North Greenwood, again, the only municipal road that entrances and exits the borough is marked in green. And here we can see the two locations on North Greenwood Avenue chosen for the traffic calming treatments. Again, because it is a municipal road, the borough was able to work directly with the DVR PC. And slide please. This slide is the proposed design for the intersection of North Greenwood and Hart Avenue. This includes painted curb extensions and ballers to narrow the travel lanes to 10 and a half feet. Slide. So the benefits of curb extensions include decreasing the width of the roadway as a cue to slow drivers down. And slide. Increasing the visibility of pedestrians who are attempting to cross there by putting it further into the street and reducing their crossing distance. And lastly, to tighten the curb radius so that turning vehicles are forced to slow down. And here is the design for a center median gateway at North Greenwood and Washington Avenue. This also narrows travel lanes to 10 and a half feet and includes share roads to indicate to both drivers and cyclists to share the road. And the benefits of a gateway median include marking a transition from a country road into a residential neighborhood with lower speeds, decreasing the width of the travel lanes again to 10 and a half feet queuing drivers to slow down. And these also allow for normal turning movements outside of the cross streets and driveways. And here we have a timeline for the project, we are where the arrow is about now. And we are hopeful for implementation in mid-May. So this is, we spoke to the DVR PC this morning and that's where we are at as of today. So of course, it depends on supplies coming in and all of that, but I think that we are pretty well on track at this point. In the slide. And for more information, you can go to the Borough Traffic Calming page on our website. As always, please feel free to reach out to me if you have any questions, and I just want to say that I'm super excited for this project and once it's successful, hopefully implementing similar treatments elsewhere in the borough. And I just want to thank Jen Ferris and Betsy DeStailio from the DVR PC for all their work on this, as well as Doug Walker, Alan Field from Hopeful Works and Mayor Kennedy for all of their help in the U.S. happen. Thank you.
Thanks, Krista. Signing that to receive this grant and I guess the idea, you know, for these temporary installations to see if they work and starting in June, what they like them, what they think they're slowing people down, and hopefully it actually does that, proven with, with speed counts and
Oh, yeah.
then we can continue to perhaps if this particular plan works, implement it at those, at other places across town.
Yeah.
Discussions with our partners at the county.
Just so everyone's aware, the DVR PC Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission will be doing their speed counts next week and then over the next two weeks, so if you see someone out there messing around, it's not actually a demonstration project yet, we're just getting the counts before they install the demonstration project. And we are hoping to, once it is installed, have a QR code at the location so that when you're there, you can go to the webpage and then learn more about the project and also provide feedback if you're still on plan.
Right.
Awesome, thank you. And that means that we're, we're two for two with our grants for public safety.
I guess the, the maybe three, $3,000 we got on this one just kind of pales a bit to this.
It's a little bit.
On its way.
You better just able to go in and work quickly.
Exactly, yes.
Well, thank you for, for work on that and the presentation. You know, perhaps going forward, we like slides and visuals and as we, you know, have better media in, in the room, we can perhaps spread it out and continue education bits as, as we go forward.
My, my graphs are not as cool as David's, but maybe one day.
So with, with that, as we've been saying for the past year and a half now, each meeting we would have a fixed time to make sure that we're providing an update on the possible sale of our water system. We were here in this room two weeks ago for one of our pre-scheduled regular mid-month meeting, took action to advance a contract with New Jersey American Water. Since then, there's been some, a lot of work behind the scenes and the expectation is that the, that contract, which is both posted on the website as well as a frequently asked questions or fact sheet that's been developed and posted as one of the first of our many planned outreach items have been posted to the website as well. And the contract is en route to the state for approval by the BPU Board of Public Utilities, I believe, and the Department of Community Affairs, DCA. From a timeline perspective, they will get to review and approve that, if they do, we'll be able to finalize it to be on the ballot in November of 2025 for all voters in Hopeful Borough to decide yes or no on. As we all develop our understanding of what, you know, what the document is, what the terms are and the questions we have, I certainly encourage everyone, there's going to be a lot of additional materials coming out this spring and summer. And we'll do our best to guess what kind of questions people would like to answer, but really the best way to, to have us answer the questions or try to direct people in, towards the information that we want is to, to ask them, you know, whether at council meetings, jotting down notes, stopping by at mayor's hours with our administrator and myself to, to, you know, they don't have to be complete questions, but ultimately we want to make sure that the information that we're able to get out there lines up with what people want to see. And also that we'll do our best to put together what we think people want to see, but as you're thinking about things over the coming months, types of outreach you'd like to see, types of events for which we expect will be several information workshops, open house type events that we will put together. But think about what you might like to see and please reach out so we can try to guide our outreach and, and information sharing to, to what.
To see, would like to see. David, anything like to add to that?
Nope, thank you. Love on.
Okay, our next item, and again, I'm gonna have to probably while we're taking public comment, go and reboot our camera again. I'm not entirely sure what's, what is happening tonight Doug, if you want to just like unplug it and plug it back in. And we'll, you know, cross our fingers and, you know, do a little, a little kind of rain dance perhaps to keep it functioning. So those online, you're looking right at me from my laptop camera and I'm, I'm truly sorry about that, you know, normally you'll see more people than that. But with that, we, our next item on the agenda is our public comment section. So I'm gonna open the meeting to the public. Mayor and council will take comments first from members of the public attending in person, and then from members of the public via Zoom. Speakers for the first of these two comment sections will be limited to five minutes and we can't take immediate action on any particular comment or, or item raised. To make a comment or ask a question during, for Zoom, push the raise hand button on Zoom feature and we will recognize you when it's your turn.
I heard a cooing of an owl, which means our camera's coming back online, so as best as time, as best time as any for anyone to come to the, the front, state your name and, and address council and, and the public watching.
Hi, who are you? Ethan Unik, Matthew in Coop, basically. I wanted to make a comment on the grease trap situation. My thinking has sort of evolved over time on this, I understand it's being tabled to the next meeting, but you know, nevertheless, I wanted to insert a comment on it. I guess some of my initial assumption, assumptions about the cost of this yearly plumbing inspection, whether it would be sort of a minor inconvenience on restaurants, and I actually made a call to a plumber that I, that I trust who's very much, you know, doesn't have any, any bias or anything like that, he was just giving sort of input on that service call that would be, say, yearly, could easily creep up to like a $1,500 expense plus because it's a specialized call, they need equipment to scope the, the, the pipes and they need a pumping truck and that sort of thing. And so I, you know, it was sort of my hope to advocate for a more moderate sensible ordinance that was sort of, would split the difference in being not onerous to, to restaurants and their already tight costs, of course, you know, the whole water utility, restaurants are getting squeezed, you know, in terms of their, their expenses right now. And so the, the ordinance, the, the modification that I would make to the ordinance that I would humbly advocate for would be to just have restaurants submit their quarterly invoices and invoices for their maintenance of their grease traps. It's my understanding that would have prevented the event that actually precipitated this whole conversation. And I think it would be more, more, more than sufficient to, to ensure that the sewer system is being maintained properly and there aren't any gross offenses happening that would cause a, a major expense to the town. So that's.
Thank you. So Ethan, if I could add, so you're talking about a scope of work that weight cameras into the laterals and pumping the whole system out to do the inspection.
Yeah, I was, I was speaking, I had a, a, a plumber that services the area, he also works in the school system and he was saying that, like that type of an inspection to verify the, the proper functioning of, of the grease trap, whether it be, you know, once for the lifetime of the restaurant or you, once yearly, whatever it may be, would be like more of like a two-person job and it's, you know, you're inspecting the baffles on it and the ongoing, the outgoing and sort of that whole thing, so he was saying that that could be, you know, eventually, it's not sort of like, I guess it kind of dispelled my assumption that it would be something that under a regular service call, a plumbing service call, who could fix a leaky drain, that they could, oh yeah, just, I'm gonna go and inspect your, your grease trap and, and it would essentially be a trivial extra expense. That, that was my understanding from the conversation from somebody that clearly knows more than I do about the, about the topic.
Perhaps maybe I could suggest even, I'm sorry, if we could reach out to you offline and perhaps collaborate a little bit more about
Oh, yeah, sure.
scope of these things, because we certainly want to make sure we're, we, you know, council has the best information about what the impact would be. And at the same time, perhaps even might help us develop a, a scope even of what should be done, and perhaps it ends up being, if, if that is the path that we go down, that it ends up being a, you know, a defined scope that we might be able to figure out what their tasks are more definitively and, and then understand, you know, in, in taking that step.
Sure.
What they're, so thank you.
That's very helpful. Because I'm just adding, so if in fact there is a simpler and less expensive scope of work that accomplishes the basic goal, I don't know whether that's true. Obviously, when you look at it, I mean, I don't think anybody was anticipating, you know, for the video cameras down the pipes, in fact, this, I mean, really, I, I think, and the other thing that occurred to me, which is that if you're gonna ask for some sort of an inspection, you do want to be specific about what it is that's being inspected, right? As opposed to just having a general, and that's not to make it or purpose of the fact to make it less so, because everybody knows exactly what's expected, so it's fairly straightforward thing, for example, of just opening up cleanouts and looking into the laterals as opposed to something more elaborate than you probably need to be clear about what that is, right?
Right.
So this is helpful.
Yeah, absolutely, I think he, he kind of had a, a nice report that I didn't quite consider, he said, you know, well, okay, he said, assuming you have this thing that's like, you're, he's like, assuming if you're, you're seeking like a near infallible solution to figure out whether waste is, is, is leaving a restaurant, which I'm not saying you are. He said, well, then that leaves aside the whole topic of like baby wipes, he said, which is usually like a way worse sort of an issue with the municipal or the sewer systems, like, you know, these flushable wipes that accumulate and that kind of thing, and it's much more difficult. So he said like, kind of, you know, essentially saying that kind of serves sort of like an 80/20 solution to just say, okay, how can we prevent like most of this happening?
Right, yeah.
Yeah. Well, right, and in fact, you can't, you know, restaurants are only one source of that, or grease is a lot coming from homes.
Sure.
But it's just a matter of where you have a, you know, the potential for more out of what you can want to place, I think, but, but this is great. And did he, he didn't give you anything like a little write-up or a quote or any explanation?
He was on vacation when I talked to him.
Well, no, it's just, I mean, if you have an email or something, I don't, I mean, it's not, but you know, it'd be helpful just to, because if we knew exactly what the scope of work was, if you look at that, I go, wow, is that,
you know, it's, it's.
A typical inspector, not, but anyway, we talked about that.
Sure, happy to.
That's really helpful, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, I was, I was just gonna say, I think that, that an offline conversation, that maybe directly includes a plumber so that we can, we can answer those addressed questions right in the meeting.
Yeah, and the scope of work was much greater than that stuff taken, right?
Yeah. Yeah, in, in, includes a business owner, you know, a business owner and a plumber, so that we're getting the different.
Thank you, Ty, well, thank you.
Before we move on, I think Sherry wanted to take this opportunity for David or someone to do a PSA about not dumping grease down the sink. Is that true?
Yes.
So she's not here, David, would you mind taking that?
Well, it, it just generally, just for people to be aware, I mean, obviously it's generally not a good idea to be putting grease down your kitchen, saying you're making a clog, your own traffic, your own pipe, but a, a good practice is, I mean, if you were making bacon or even something else where you had a fair amount of oil in a pan or to just wipe it out, you know, with a paper towel and toss it into the trash, you get, it doesn't have to be perfect, get the bulk of it, right? Because it's fairly easy with hot water and suds to get a whole lot of oil and grease to go down there. The problem is eventually it finds its way to colder environment and it can the pipes, or it ends up going to the plant, which is a problem down at the plant, so. So I guess the suggestion where you can try not to put anything on the sink, you don't have to, but if you have, I mean, I just, the other night, just taking roast out of the oven and there was a bunch of, you know, what's at the bottom of the pan, you just take a, wipe it out as opposed to just blasting it with hot water and running it all down, it's a simple thing. But if people are mindful of it and realize that the cumulative load on the system, you know, is, is a problem, and, and plus, I know in our house, our lines that went from our drain out and connect to our sanitary line in the street were put in by a homeowner 20 years ago, didn't really do it right, and one day it all plugged up and we found the entire 20-foot stretch was just plugged with grease. So it just ends up replacing the whole line, but I mean, it's, it's more that goes down there than you think.
Reasons beyond just it hurting the system, it could, it could be a problem in your own house.
Well, it could be a problem in your own house, but, but then also my understanding from talking to this guy Morehouse about this is that on the treatment plant side, it is also, it adds to the treatment cost at the plant because they, they have to handle oil and grease in a, in a separate way and so, you know, if, so not only do you have to worry about the clogs in the system in your house, in the system, and then of course, obviously if you have a clog in a main in the street and things back up, it's not just somebody's household waste that's backing up, it's maybe the whole neighborhood backing up into somebody's basement. So the consequences can be pretty severe when it goes wrong, and it has sometimes. So, anyway, all the reason not to fit the bag back down. Thank you.
Thank you. Chubbies, along Front Street. I want to continue with the grease trap conversation, so when you say we're gonna have a discussion about this later, is that something we should convene or somebody on the council will convene, just so that we can make.
Responding to Ethan, he's got information, and I think we said we could reach out to him and set that up, I think that seems like the way to go.
Doesn't fall through the cracks before the next meeting, because I wasn't sure what happened between last meeting and this meeting, so I wasn't sure if there was a discussion or if I should have called a discussion, you know, I'm not sure how the, what the process is, so I just want to be clear that before the vote next month, there's some discussion, you know, about what it means. And then I have a question about when you said last time that this had happened before, I'm curious if when it happened before, it was in the same area, like the same Lafayette Street area where the clog happened? Because I talked to our plumber too, and he said it may be that there are many restaurants or businesses going into one pipe and it might have been the grease trap of that, of one particular restaurant, he said, but everything else before that pipe is also contributing to what's in that pipe that's going out, right? So said, we should make sure that, you know, instead of every restaurant getting this plumbing requirement, if every restaurant is doing the four times a year, restrap cleanup, maybe what we do is we do that for a year, we make sure that every restaurant does it, we see if there's any problems in that year, and if not, then maybe in a year from now, we can reassess because we need a plumber to actually do this work. Because he said the same thing, the plumber that I use, and he said, it's gonna be expensive to have someone do it, and he said, the other thing is if you do it the day after you get the grease trap cleaned, it's of course gonna be a clean pipe. Said, so you're gonna have to figure out when is this plumbing inspection gonna happen with regard to when grease trap gets cleaned. Right, so that's the other thing to think about. So I know it might seem trivial, but restaurants are really struggling to make a profit these days with the food costs and by keeping some, you know, like everything. So a thousand dollars might not seem like a lot, but it's a lot of money. So I just want to make sure that we can do whatever we can to minimize what all of us are gonna have to pay for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. The other thing is, last month, Shara talked about the Eagle Scout, Lyndon Horton was gonna put up the trees on Columbia Avenue for his Eagle Scout project. And he couldn't be here tonight, but he is raising money to help buy the trees and to get all the equipment. So there's a box at Chubbies for donations for him, it costs, he needs $1,200. And I said I would announce today that if anyone wants to contribute to the, to the trees getting planted for this Eagle Scout project, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wilson, first.
Hello, Jean Chway. So I had attended the water meeting that you had in, over the summer to initiate the referral process for selling the water system. So at that time, we had talked about, or you had mentioned that you were really serious about pursuing alternative options for managing our own water system. And then David, you had said in. And then David, you had said in um, August or so, that you got the grant that Hopewell Borough. Received the New Jersey D E P grant for restoring the um, number four and number six. So I wanted to know what the status is of that.
Of the brand? So um.
Of the project.
Oh, well, okay.
Yeah.
So we we spoke to the D E P, uh, this would be. A little over a month ago, um. To confirm two things. One, that the grant was still available because that grant was the funding came from the bipartisan infrastructure bill. And as I started to read about the current administration in Washington. Blowing back grants and contracts that had previously been issued, uh, you know, nervous. And so we reached out to the D E P to do two things. One, just to ask them to confirm, cause that money was awarded to them last year. Uh, wanted to make sure that A, the funds were still available and B, just to reiterate that. Um, you know, we don't know what the outcome is going to be in terms of the referendum or, you know, where we go to make sure that that option was still available to us. And they confirmed both, they said the money is in the bank, it's here in New Jersey, um, and it's secure. And, you know, they knew this, but just, you know, reiterating, you know. Keep it warm for us because we wanna make sure that that's available. Um, you know.
For one, no, because the grant was, I think, given in August and then the inauguration of this administration was in. January, so.
Right. The money was awarded before that administration's going. So that grant, there was thirty, possibly thirty million dollars. It was actually given to the state of New Jersey under that grant program of which ours is a fraction. It's administered actually through the D E P. But the overall award for, I believe it was fiscal twenty twenty four, fiscal twenty three, was about thirty million. There was another um, for the previous years, there were two sort of frances of money under this program. This is the. Um. E C S T C program, environmental emerging contaminants, small and disadvantage.
We we believe it's, it is not being called back by the federal government, that it still is viable and exists.
That I have the question about, cause there was four months in twenty twenty four where you had the grant and. Were we, are we serious about pursuing the maintenance of the?
About the grant though, because the sacred school is also federal money and federal money takes a very long time to get to you. Like we only just, when did you hear about sacred school then? This week?
Yeah.
We heard that we were awarded in June of last year. So that's the first communication we had from them about anything about the grant. So that was just like, hey, we've acknowledged that you're, you are, we'll eventually get the grant. And then getting the money itself, um, this is a reimbursement grant, is gonna take probably another couple of years of implementation. So there is the, I would say, the issue of federal money, which is why a lot of um municipalities are not actually going after it anymore because it's so bonerous. It takes a lot longer than one would hope it does. So it's just not an instantaneous.
A lot of water systems, municipal water systems do use grant money to do the repairs that. Of the type that we need. And so it is a viable way of making these repairs happen. So I guess that really the other question is how genuine is it that the council is pursuing the alternative? Which is to repair and maintain the water.
Okay, let me clarify a couple of things. First of all, this grant is specific for treatment of P F O S. It is not for anything else. It can't be used for water mains, it can't be used for. Anything else. Second, um, the grant itself, I mean, we were, we were given an email that says, yes, we've awarded the grant. The next stage in that is for the D E P to actually issue a grant agreement. They draft a grant agreement, they're about sixty five days long. We've been waiting for that for months. That was the other thing I asked them was to give us an update. And they said. Um, uh, working on it, we're coming up with a whole framework for these grant agreements and, you know, we'll be reaching out soon. So that was the answer that I got in addition to the other before. So uh, actually, the ball has been in their court since August on issuing a grant agreement. It's not something that we can do. So the grant agreement comes out, then we get the agreement. Um, at that point, we obviously review it. See if there are any changes or anything else, we execute the agreement. The next stage would be to actually put out. A request for proposal for the planning and design phase. It's a two-phase process. There's a planning that the initial grant agreement would be for planning and design. That money is not money that we would have to refund. If for some reason we move forward with that stage and then ultimately uh decide to sell the system, um.
So is the council waiting for the referendum to pursue the repair?
Waiting for a grant agreement from the N J D E P that is there, the next thing that they have to do. We don't know when they're going to deliver that, okay? It doesn't make sense to proceed with construction. Well, first of all, the. The planning and design part is likely to take um, at least a year because of all the permitting involved. Mostly because of where well number six is located in the park. So if we got the um, grant agreement today. And then sat down and put together a request for proposal for engineering firms to do the planning designs, planning and design and permitting. So that's the initial stage. But the second stage is a separate grant agreement for the actual construction, which happens after you get the design completed. And the permits in place, because you can't advertise an R F P for the construction unless you actually have a viable product. Um. My estimate, looking at the various regulatory things that happened with well number six. Because of its proximity to a stream corridor, proximity to wetlands, um, D N R canal zone and. Potentially, we're not sure what the implications would be as far as um, it being three acres and there's this whole issue of divergence. You're probably looking at a year for the time that you've actually hired an engineer or permanent time that you get the design work done.
Yeah.
Which gives us plenty of time, obviously, to determine whether we're gonna sell the system or not. Uh, so again, so that first thing is get the grant agreement. Execute the grant agreement, then proceed with that work. Um, if, you know, if we don't get the grant agreement until, you know, July. And the referendum is in the fall, it may not make sense for us to expend funds on um, putting out an R F P. We haven't made a decision on that.
A year from them agreeing to grant the two point three million till when they actually give you a grant agreement? You're saying from August?
I'm saying as we approach November, when there's a referendum, and we don't know whether we're gonna have a system or not. Depending on when we got the grant agreement and looking at the timeline, it may make sense to pause until we know the outcome of the referendum.
Wait one second, but it's, one, it's a decision that has been made yet. Two, what we've been doing is trying to get this information from D E P so we can proceed.
Right.
And three, as part of it, we've softened them and gotten their commitment that this next phase, should they actually deliver the materials that we could continue with. Could be done, um, I'll say regardless of the system status, that they, their initial parts of the grant. That they, we we could, if it arrived.
Yeah.
Funded and it would not be a, you know, a a take it or leave it, you know, um, pause with considering selling the system. That we could receive funds and work on it, should it arrive, if we so chose and we negotiate with them to preserve that. So if next month they gave us the agreement and so, and we took the next steps uh to put out R F P and, which is under the grant, they pay for those. Steps, we could do that. And and we wouldn't have to pay, we worked with them to make sure that we wouldn't have to pay those initial pieces back. And it's our, I mean, it's subject to council approval, but.
Right.
It's our intention if it, when it comes to do it.
Which is actually one of the reasons why they decided to bifurcate it into the planning and design, the grand agreement and then a second grant agreement. Because the way it works is, once you get to the actual construction phase, if you use federal money for construction of an asset. And then you sell that asset to a private entity, you have to return the the uh depreciated value to the government at the time of sale. So it doesn't make sense to do that, particularly if you don't know, if you, if you sold the system and you don't know whether the buyer actually is going to use that asset. So, but the point is, we can safely proceed with the planning and design part. Without any risk. That money doesn't have to be returned. So they assured us of that in the very beginning. That was part of the thing that they set up. Um, but but also, again, I wanna underscore something, which is that this brand is very specific to emerging contaminants, specific to P F O S. It's it's the only grant that we've found that were eligible for pertaining to capital improvements in the system. We have been looking at grants, both at the federal and state level and various financing options for quite a while. The USDA, um, New Jersey Infrastructure Bank, um, the biggest problem we have with things other than the treatment system. Is that there there are some grants available, for example, through USDA, there are some, um, there's also financing available through the. What can be called the I bank, in some cases that offers principal forgiveness, which is where you basically get a loan. But then at some point, they basically uh forgive the principal. The problem is those programs, every single one we looked at. Are, they have uh income eligibility requirements. It has to do with immediate income in your community and we do not qualify. So for example, you can get a low interest, long-term loan from USDA, uh, at least you could. I don't know how those programs are going to be in the next couple of years. Um, but there's no principal forgiveness. And the same is true, for example, with lead service line replacements, we estimate the total cost of that to be one point two million dollars. And that's something we would actually be required to do by July of twenty thirty one. Um. I bank offers a hundred percent principal forgiveness for communities that meet the income criteria. We don't, so they don't offer that at all. The best they can do, we think, well, I mean, if if we're eligible for it at all, is fifty percent principal forgiveness on projects. You know, other than so, for example, for water mains and so on. That's not guaranteed, we, but we think that we are potentially eligible for that. So I just wanna make it clear that, you know, the availability of grants for the roughly seven million dollars worth of capital expenses. That we would see in the next five years, not having nothing to do with P F O S treatment, is very limited.
Yeah.
And we have been exploring that for two years. We've met with the I bank on three separate occasions, hoping to get better answers and did.
Um, and then one of them with the USDA grant, which is surprisingly to, to me, to be honest, based on our geographic, uh, geography. Geography uh to them, you know, in a meeting with um, uh, with our. Uh, compatriots, that's not counterparts in Rocky Hill.
Right.
Um, and talking through the type of things that they've done.
Right.
The USDA grant is actually one of the things which we have done the paperwork to apply for regardless. Is apparently a community difference between us and them where the program that uh was, they didn't get a grant, they got a loan.
Well. The loan was paid off with the congressional probation. They were not eligible for it either. Sorry, I didn't mean.
That also came up in the um, public meetings from residents is that a lot of other municipalities that manage their water system. Have residents who are experts who help with the work in terms of raising money, if not from grants. But we have the potential to raise money in other ways. And so it has been suggested to the council. To involve other people who are experts in the community, either engineers, grant writers, fundraisers and so forth. If. The council is serious about pursuing the maintenance of the water system.
The what would be the sources of funding if they're not government?
That's what we'd have to explore.
Well, I'm. Trying to explain that we've been exploring that. So if you're not talking about state or federal funding, you're talking about private funding?
Potentially.
So let me let what I'll, what I'll continue to say is that, please, you know, those people are in our community, bring them to us.
Happy to.
Happy to to talk to all of them. Um, we hope that if there are solutions like that out there, we will. Uh, everything else we're exploring, explore them. Um, again, one of the other things that came out of our conversation with Rocky Hill. Um, there was a lot of discussion about, you know, they have outside professional grant writers who've been quite successful, though not honestly in the water. Field. Their, the, the, the success they've had are in different types of grants, frankly, not related to water. But these are all things worth continued exploration and um, like, well, to Ethan, I'm happy to connect if you've got. If there's particular um, people that we haven't spoken with, um, that have these skills, release, let's, 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 let's discuss it.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. I see animals in person. I I don't see any hands raised up.
Um, hi, Marion Legos, model admin. Um, I'd like to express appreciation for including the Hopeful Borough Park Cleanup in the Hopeful Borough Recreation Calendar. This year's event is May third from eight until noon. It's an annual event spearheaded by St. I Morehouse on the first Saturday in May. I attended two years ago and really appreciated the community gathering to care for our borough park. Volunteers have done everything from pick up trash, remove weeds around the gazebo, plant native plants, power wash the white bridge and clear trails from fallen branches. Last year, the Sowerland Conservancy supported this event by providing river birches and native tree for volunteers to plant. This year, we intend to continue their support. April is Native National Native Plant Awareness Month. What's the big deal? What are need, why native plants? Native plants are the plants that have been growing in our area for hundreds and hundreds of years. They are adapted to our weather swings. They need no fertilizer and once established, they require minimal supplemental watering. They feed the birds and insects in our area, allowing a healthier ecosystem. Native plants filter our air and clean our groundwater. They help reduce flooding, increase groundwater recharge and slow temperature rise. Native plants are not just easier, they are better for the planet and therefore for all of us. On the topic of native plants, the Hopeful Public Library is sponsoring a speaker series on the secrets of butterfly gardening. The presenter is Kiersey, a Hopewell Valley resident and co-founder of the Hopewell Valley Gardens for Wildlife. The event is next Wednesday, April ninth, in the Presbyterian Church from seven to eight thirty. I encourage everyone with any interest in native plants, habitats and butterflies to come out. Hopeful Borough residents are truly fortunate to be surrounded by the Sowerlands, unique in its geology and its ecology. Our community is surrounded by preserved natural spaces, a coordinated effort by residents, government and community nonprofits over many decades. I am endlessly grateful for our open spaces. However, these open spaces are not old growth forests. Most of our open spaces are previously disturbed areas where native trees, shrubs and understory plants have been removed at one point in time. Our current open spaces are a mix of native and non-native invasive plants and animals. Many of these invasive plants have entered our ecosystems from residential and commercial landscaping. On March, March twenty fourth of this year, the New Jersey Senate passed Senate Bill S one zero two nine, the Invasive Species Management Act. With unanimous vote of thirty nine to zero. This legislation marks a significant achievement in balancing the concerns of the New Jersey nursery industry with the efforts to protect New Jersey's ecosystems from invasive species. Reflecting years of dedication and collaboration amongst a wide range of stakeholders. This bill must go through the House before it goes to the governor, become a law. Um, anybody who's listening to this, I encourage you to reach out to our elected officials to make the bill a reality. Within the first thirteen months of enactment, all propagation of these plants will be prohibited and the restriction then expands to a forty nine month window where inventory must be depleted. The list below is the first set of plants to be banned. These plants are highly invasive and disruptive to our natural areas. You may not see these plants propagating in your yard because of frequent lawn mowing, but animals and birds transplant and transport the seeds into natural areas where they begin to spread aggressively. I frequently walk through the natural, natural areas surrounding the borough and I can find nearly all of these plants within our forests, meadows and marshes. Included on this list, Norway maple, tree of heaven, mimosa, porcelain berry, barberry, angelica tree, autumn olive. Winged burning bush, which looks lovely in the fall, but when it's in the forest, not so much. English ivy, European privet, honeysuckle. Uh, Chinese silver grass, running bamboo, calorie pear, the list goes on and on. I would encourage the council to consider an ordinance that prohibits the new plantings of these invasive species to help protect their natural lands. Other municipalities in New Jersey's have passed ordinances to reduce the impact of invasive species in our communities and ecosystems. There are volunteers who work on a regular basis removing these plants from our preserves. However, as long as the seeds persist in the soil and as long as new seeds are grown in the nearby community. Their work will never be done. Bringing me to my final comment, I would like to request that the Hopeful Borough pass a resolution acknowledging the beautiful and unique. Ecosystem we live in. Hopeful Borough is the only municipality surrounded on all sides by the Sowerlands, a region whose borders are acknowledged and defined by Mercer County Planning Board. Where I'm going with this, cause I think I'm probably running out of time here, is um. We haven't. We are the only municipality in the Sowerlands, aside from West Campbell Township, who have not. Passed a resolution in support of Sowerlands being an area of critical state concern.
But you're in, you, thank you. Uh, and you're in luck because that that is item fourteen on our agenda, this is.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Annabelle Davis. I live on Broad Street. Um, I just have a question before I make a request. The sales regarding the water sale, that's like a a final sale, right? There's no fixed term. It's like an indefinite period in which.
Yes, it's not a, it's not a lease or a management agreement. It is a.
So my request then, um, regarding like the information and the more like public outreach that will come before the referendum is. Everything I've seen so far has been more about like the five years and the short term. Um, whereas myself and like other young people in town are concerned more about the long term, especially as we consider like climate change. And New Jersey specifically is at risk of like drought, saltwater intrusion, like big changes in the freshwater landscape. Um. And I feel like I don't have a good understanding of what New Jersey, America. And I feel like I don't have a good understanding of what New Jersey American Water's plan is regarding that, if they have an awareness, if there's a plan for like how that's going to affect management, pricing, different like contamination levels. And so I feel like to make an informed decision since this is definite and like once we're the people in charge of the council or Hopeful or our kids, like that's still going to be affecting us. I would request that that is like an element of the outreach that we can understand, not just how that affects like the next five or ten years, but long term, as we might see like pretty significant changes to freshwater in the state.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Annabelle Davis.
Anyone else in person? I don't see any online hands raised either. The button is at the bottom of your Zoom screen. Seeing none, and this is the first of several other speaking opportunities, of course, I'll take a motion to close the first public comment section this evening.
Hold on.
Oh, second, Deb, thank you. All in favor? Alright, okay. Next item on our agenda is four sets of minutes. Two regular meetings, two executive sessions on March sixth and March twentieth. They're in our packets. I happily take a motion on all four.
I'll second. Oh, was that a sound?
There was a sound, but I I I want to, I want to put some motion at first, so we got Heidi did move, Deb seconded. All in favor of the motion until we ratify all four. All opposed? Thank you so much. Correct. The next item, item nine, is a continuation of the public hearing on on and second reading of ordinance eight ninety four, which was carried from the March sixth, twenty twenty five meeting. As noted before, we will be carrying it, I will ask for a motion um in a minute to carry it to our May meeting. But we still do have pieces of the continuing public hearing to attend to technically. So Reggie, if you could read it by title and do the, do a quick explanation.
An ordinance of the Borough of Hopewell, County of Mercer, New Jersey, regarding the Borough Sanitary Sewer System and Grease Traps specifically, and amending chapter seventeen of the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Hopewell, nineteen seventy four.
And as we said earlier, this is the motion to modify the part of our code that regulates what restaurants and other users have to do with grease traps, the grease traps device that is designed to keep grease out of our sewer system. So we did hear some comments before, and probably should have been at this point, but technically, we'll we'll make sure that this all considered, obviously, as as council considers this. Now's another opportunity for more comments on that as well. That opportunity will continue next month, so seeing none at the moment for coming for either online or in person. I will take a motion to continue and carry the public hearing. Do I need, do I need to open it even though it's been carried?
I would open it.
Okay, I'll take a, I'd like to first reopen. I'm going to use that word because I I like it better. So the the meeting to be to the public for the continued public hearing on ordinance eight ninety four.
I would.
So seeing none, I'm going to ask for a motion not to close the public hearing, but to continue it. So we have another opportunity for discussion, more information that council will gather with our restaurant community over the next month to regroup in at our May first meeting. So that'll take that motion to carry this. Alright, Krista, Deb second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, opposed? I think that was already all of us, so. Item ten, this is the second reading of ordinance eight ninety five and public hearing for ambulance fee ordinance. Reggie, you good?
An ordinance of the Borough of Hopewell and Mercer County, New Jersey, establishing fees for the provision of emergency medical services and ambulance transport services, and amending chapter two of the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Hopewell, nineteen seventy five.
I'll do my best. This is a an ordinance that will allow us to participate in this system with the other Hopewell Valley municipalities. Where Hopewell Township will administratively act as a billing agent for the first aid squads in Hopewell Valley to bill for ambulance calls. Our participation research is that they will do that only when there's insurance. And I think the word is back bill, but if you could not afford it or did not have insurance, the problem would not be to seek payment from the the user that needs neighbors, would only be an administrative request to to an insurance company. Those funds would be then collected by Hopewell Township on behalf of all of the municipalities and squads, then redistributed back to the fire districts and EMS squads based on the ratios that are developed between the between the the groups which are based on calls and end use. Is that last part? Close to anything, there was a question last time about, well, how do we know we get money back if we're out doing calls?
All all the funds are going to be collected and used to offset what we pay into the into the shared services. So that's how it's not going to physically come back to the borough, but it's going to be a paper, a paper entry back to the borough to reduce, hopefully reduce what we need to pay for services in the future.
And some of the things that we pay into, like, for example, our our fire stations have several paid career fire fighters. They're actually employees of the township and we kind of pay into that for them to be here. This would first be offset that before it came back as a fund.
Yeah, and it's also, as you mentioned, it's all soft billing. They make one request to the insurance. If they don't get it, they don't go after the, you know, the person that needed the service.
Thank you. I'll next open the meeting to the public for the public hearing on on this ordinance.
Hi, Marian Leboz again. Deb, you mentioned the soft billing, so if they bill the insurance. The thing is, a lot of Americans these days and probably many Hopewell Valley residents have high deductible plans, which basically as a family, until you reach somewhere between ten and twelve thousand dollars, you're paying everything out of pocket. So you, I have insurance and you can bill me, but that five hundred dollar bill is basically going to expect me to pay five hundred dollars, my insurance.
They're only going to collect, my understanding is they're only going to collect what the insurance pays. So they make the, you you know how you get your form and it says this was the charge and you're meeting your deductible, so we're paying zero?
Yeah.
Okay, that's that's how it's going to work.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else with a comment or question on ordinance eight ninety five? Seeing none in person and no hands raised on the online. I'll take a motion to close the meeting of public for this particular ordinance. Second, David second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unless I will seek a.
I'm going to do a roll call.
I'll try to.
Wait, I just had a really quick comment. There were just a few very minor revisions that we had sent to you from the township. So I just wanted to make sure if there's a motion to adopt, that it's a motion as a to adopt as a.
Got it. So I was about to ask for a motion to adopt, so is that sufficient information for someone to make a motion or do you want to go over the?
I think very, very briefly.
Make a motion to adopt as as minded.
Yeah, and they're very brief. They're in, you know, there are some changes just to language from medication to operational costs, just to make things a little clearer and we added borough in addition to Hopewell Township because the borough does a lot of the transporting under the shared service fee because it has its own you know, fire and rescue, I believe. So there were just a few additions, very minor additions in the ordinance to make those clarifications. That was really it.
None of which are substantive enough to require us to.
Not substantive. They are minor and can you do not have to read.
We have a first, a a motion there. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Alright, Deb, thank you so much. Can you do a roll call on this one?
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Ms. Steeler?
Yes.
Ms. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
We've got two more ordinances. These are both first readings, so the public hearing on both of these would be at our May meeting. But first, item eleven. Pardon me, ordinance eight ninety six, first reading. Reggie, could read by tone?
For a Hopewell County of Mercer, California, it's twenty twenty five ordinance to exceed the municipal's appropriations limits and to establish a cap bank, NJSA three A colon four dash four five point one four.
Thank you. I know this is one that I we do every year and is a housekeeping one with our budget process, but Doug, if you give us a, if there's anything more to say beyond that, now's your now's your chance.
Okay, so with with without a resolution, we can go up to two point five. That's our cap, two point five on the items that are inside the cap of the budget. We have inside cap, outside cap. So we on the inside cap, we can go up two point five without a resolution from council. If we wanted to go up to three point five, we would need a resolution or like this, an ordinance from council to go to the three point five. So what we're doing is we're already going up to two point five. But what this allows us to do is that one percent between the two point five and the three point five, we can bank that for a rainy day, should something happen in the borough that we have to exceed, you know, the two point five, we can bank it. It stays on your rolls for three years. If you don't use it in the three years, that one percent disappears. So that's why it's an annual thing that we want to take advantage of. Doesn't cost taxpayers anything, doesn't increase our budget. It's just like a safety net. Should should something happen that we needed to exceed our cap.
Thank you, Deb. I'll take a motion to introduce ordinance eight ninety six. Second? Second, David? All in, we want to do a roll call for.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Ms. Steeler?
Yes.
Ms. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Thanks much. The public hearing on this ordinance will be at our next meeting, May first, twenty twenty five. Next item twelve, ordinance eight ninety seven, first reading of a notification to our Shade Tree Committee. Reggie, if you could read by tone?
An ordinance of the Borough of Hopewell, County of Mercer, New Jersey, regarding the advising Shade Tree Commission and amending chapter two of the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Hopewell, nineteen seventy five.
Uh this one, I'll I'll start the exclamation, came from Shade Tree. That group's been doing a lot of work and as it turns out, our ordinance only really allowed two two people to be appointed on it. We've had a lot more people doing the work. So this modernizes the committee slightly, allows to make a few more appointments that are consistent with the people who have actually been there, doing the work and allow them to to continue doing what they're doing more officially, since technically only two and a half of them perhaps were actually able to be appointed fully. So with that.
Also allow our tree expert who now lives outside of the borough to maintain.
Oh, that's actually a good point. So we, some members who are out of out of borough class.
Recently, yeah. Yeah.
With that, I will take a motion to introduce ordinance eight ninety seven.
Oh, yes.
Second, second.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Ms. Steeler?
Yes.
Ms. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Uh next, we've got our consent agenda. I'll I'll note for fifty two, that's something we did a while ago, but they didn't actual ordinance for it, for Steve Webb, who was our OEM representative. I'm I'm happy and thankful to both our our staff in in helping make recommendations and our personal committee for 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 looking and and reviewing them as well. But you know, we're, as we later on will be introducing our budget and very proud of the the work of our professionals and having a very reasonable budget, but also very proud that we're able to provide increases for our our staff this year that that do exceed the the cost of living increases that we're seeing. We were very, all very much proud of the work that our our team does and our our duties to make sure that they're paid appropriately. So I appreciate everyone's work on this. If anyone has any other pieces to pull out or questions, otherwise I'd have to take a motion. Alright, do we have a second?
I'll second. Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Ms. Steeler?
Yes.
Ms. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Uh next one, item fourteen, resolution twenty twenty five fifty seven, actually is, with a speaker earlier, we've been requested to show our support for the designation of the Sowerlands area as in as part of the state plan. I'll, I distributed or had distributed with, you know, kind of a tweet language. There's, I think, a unanimous excitement amongst council and our community that Sowerlands region is absolutely needs to be protected, that all the resources we can help bring to bear and support are in in all of our benefit. There's, as a as a fully developed town, though, there are probably, when it when it ultimately is implemented, well in the future, some caveats that we may want to think about that that communities that, for example, are included in the pines area or the Highlands area may have a little bit more nuance when you are built out. We obviously are not an old growth forest. We are a fully developed borough, which is relatively unique, not entirely unique in the in the area. So I'm happy to take a motion, frankly, with with either either version, either the one as as proposed by the Sowerland Conservancy or or the tweaked one.
I I I would definitely advocate for the one, I would make a motion for the one that has been proposed by the Sowerland Conservancy. I I understand the difference between the developed and the undeveloped areas, but since the the area of critical state concern would be affecting the undeveloped areas, it wouldn't be, I you know, I wouldn't be worried about it the way that it would affect our already developed areas. And I and I feel like that's the 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 better um resolution.
So could you explain how it is that 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 area only affects undeveloped land? Because I'm not finding that in my research. Where does that come from?
I mean, I have what my from my conversations with the Sowerland Conservancy and with, you know, hopefully I was, are are any of them on Zoom? I'm not sure. And also with, you know, another at another environmental advocate. And I I looked, I did look, Lambertville did pass this. And I I I find it to, the modified one says that we fully support the designation of the Sowerland region outside our borders. And that's just seems strange to me that we would be making a resolution to support something outside our borders.
I would agree with the tweaked version because I think including us in that resolution as a built out town grid might bring in unneeded oversight to a town that's already built out. So I I think it makes sense to to have the the way we adjusted it.
So there's a there's a motion for the original version on the floor. Any, is there a second? Is there an alternate motion?
Yeah, a motion for the tweaked one.
Yeah, the modified one.
Yeah.
And I'll second. That that version.
Okay.
For the modified version. I think that so there are a number of sort of dilemmas here. I mean, on one hand, so obviously, everybody wants to support the preservation of the Sowerlands, I mean, the ecology, long list of things that obviously have been explained and advocated by the Conservancy, and I agree with all of that. The the question here is, in my mind, is I mean, designation of it as an area of critical state concern, the 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 objectives of that are all stated pretty clearly and the information is provided to us, it provides potentially funding, it provides all potentially protective mechanisms. What is unknown is, and we're not anywhere close to that, is what the regulatory framework would ultimately be under that designation at some time in the future, and that's what we don't know. And I am very no means an expert on this, but I did a little work today looking at the regulations that apply, for example, on the New Jersey Highlands, which is another criminal area of state concern and also in the New Jersey Pines. Those regulations do not apply only to undeveloped land. There are all sorts of exemptions for routine things that people would do on developed properties. Ryan, I'm sure you know all about this. But it's it's not as if they only apply, and 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 some of them, it has to do with the amount of square footage of disturbance or the amount of impervious cover, similar to the triggers for our stormwater ordinances, which and and the state stormwater regulation, because that's, I think, the main driver, for example, in the Highlands. In the Pines, it's more complex than that. So the question is, you know, we we endorse this, but we're, and the other thing is, I mean, what defines the Sowerlands is an interesting thing. I've been trying trying to coax around and find an actual geographic boundary. If you look at these other areas that are designated as areas of critical state concern, they usually have specific, either they're municipalities that are included or they're, you know, they're actually firm lines. When I look at the information that was provided to us, it looks like what's been delineated as the Sowerlands, I think, by the Sowerlands, by the council, is pretty much based on topography. I mean, the the description of it is it's largely.
is pretty much based on topography. I mean, the the description of it is it's largely um of Sowerlands, it's largely a function of the geology of the soils, hence the term Sowerlands, right, which is mostly derived from the diabase rock that underlies those ridges. That does not underlie any part of Hope Well Borough. So if you, I mean, I'm not saying that we should be so rigid that we say it's purely based on the geologic context, but that is the main thing. I mean, what makes the Sowerland soil sour is the deficiency of nutrients that ordinarily associated with other types of rocks that are deficient in that diabase, things like potassium, hence the name. Uh obviously, there's a whole other dimension of ecological services and history and everything else that we value. It's not strictly based on the geology. I I found it interesting when I was looking at that map that was on the flyer that we were given um that there actually is a section like Crusher Road that is actually up there in the diabase that wasn't included in it. And yet, our municipal boundary seems to be sort of on the flanks of it. So one could make the argument that it's not clear to me that Hope Well is in fact in the Sowerlands, but it all depends on how you define it. And um since that, I don't see a a um a clear uh objective determination of where that boundary is, I don't know where that boundary would end up down the road when it is going to be subject to land use regulations. I know this is very long-winded, forgive me. The the issue comes down to this. What would the implications potentially be for land use regulation in the borough?
Exactly.
And and I don't know that that's going to lead to something dreadful, but it's a big unknown. And and I also don't know whether this endorsement in itself truly has any teeth that would lead to that. So it 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 may be that it doesn't. I'm just trying, I'm just trying to articulate, you know, what what which has been bouncing around in my brain all week, so I have to get it out. Um and and but the 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 other side of that is, if you if it does have implications for land use in the borough, then those are essentially permanent and ongoing. And and I wish I understood more about the process. In other words, when when this happens and let's say, and this is referring to a list of areas that were proposed for designation in the draft plan that was uh I think from December of twenty twenty four. Um and so we're endorsing that and saying, yes, please do that. Keep that in the draft. I wish, you know, somebody had come here and given us a little presentation on what the implications of that were. So maybe I'm over analyzing, but that's kind of why I and and I guess so, one last thing. Uh you know, does um does our change in this language um sort of diminish our endorsement and our enthusiasm for this overall concept? And the basic concept is you have this thing that trans that that extends across multiple municipal boundaries and you need to look at it holistically, and that's what the objective of this is. I mean, I'm certainly we're cheerleaders for that. Um I'm just not entirely comfortable with the determination that the borough itself is actually in the Sowerlands, and if so, should be subject to land regulation under that. So that's it. I'm sorry. So what I think what I'm hearing is universal
um support for uh the special region being recognized for receiving protections and support from the state. Uh but I I guess I'm going to draft it, so I'll just say maybe a footnote that when the legislation for this is put together that um you know, perhaps this is a reminder for the legislature to maybe check with us to make sure that the same type of uh land use regulations that might fit Hillsborough or undeveloped lands or parts of the Hope Township that have fourteen acres of zoning zoning don't necessarily automatically just apply here without a big market. But but ultimately, a gesture of our universal support of the of the special region and uh and essentially protections and resources.
So the message is, yes, we endorse it, but you're gonna have to check with us.
Did you get a chance to speak to the Sowerlands, Ryan, or?
I did. Uh yeah, we've had a lot of on this.
On this topic, on this topic.
Yeah, just our our planner and the county planners and lots of books, but uh no, they had the abacus for it, I did not tell.
Yeah, I I I you know, I and I will obvi- obviously, I mean, I will, I would have rather had the original one. I I would support it, you know, as you know, with my fellow council members. But I do just kind of want to say, I think that when an organization like the Sowerlands that works so closely with our borough in something like, um you know, Marion was just saying earlier on, they're working with the cleanup, that when they reach out to us, that we give them the courtesy of a direct conversation about about the issue that they, you know. I I think that that's, you know, it's probably a fifteen minute phone call, but I just think that that would is a is a good idea.
Well, I would also say that normally when somebody is coming to us for an endorsement, they usually make a presentation on the basis of it and making that request. I mean, that would be, to me, the normal way that would happen and then be available to answer questions.
I think the other piece of this that we've we've now spent um and was reluctant to, you know, have our planner be more involved to be on the initial discussion is that um this is something that's so far in the future and vague um that um our the the goal here is to show our support um and I believe this has not done that. So I believe we have a motion and a second. Yep.
It's all right, all right, man.
Do we? Yes, so we we can we can move on that. We have a roll call or do we just?
No, no.
All right. Thank you. Uh next one, uh item fifteen, there are twenty twenty five municipal budget. Um Doug, I want to thank you and Diane and everyone involved in this and putting this together. Um this is a very unique thing, not that governments have budgets, um everyone does, uh but um we always talk about ordinances having two votes and resolutions having one. This is the one thing we do where there is a resolution that will get two votes. So we will um um introduce it this evening, uh and then at our May meeting, have a public hearing with more information on it and a and a final vote, including with our CFO here to answer questions during the presentation. Um Doug, the 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 keys that I I my takeaways are um a uh continuing uh decrease in our requests for more funds from uh from our community. Two years ago, we were a four and a half cent increase. Last year, three and a half cent. This year, two and a half cent tax increase. And I'm really um proud of what uh Doug and and his team were able to do with that. Um we will be having a hundred fifty thousand dollars of um kind of pay-go capital for this budget year that we didn't have last year that allows to do uh projects without borrowing um more money for it. Um we also uh largely through Doug's work and with our CFO um adjusted our 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 banking relationships to um increase the the amount of um interest we receive on the funds we have to the tune of about a quarter of a million dollars, which will um increase our um uh we call a nest egg or surplus essentially um to a really, uh I'll say, more than healthy number, frankly. Um Doug, any other highlights you'd like to bring up? And really, thank you.
No, that's fine. We're gonna have more of a presentation when we when we do the uh the actual public hearing.
All right. Um with that, I'll um I'll take a motion to introduce.
I'll do.
A second?
Oh, no.
I'll second.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Ms. Steeler?
Yes.
Ms. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Uh next, I'll take a motion to approve the claims prepared. Uh second, second. And I think how you want, how you want, you know, that's good, yeah.
Uh Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Ms. Steeler?
Yeah.
Ms. Weaver?
Yeah.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
I'm just gonna note um two proclamations that we have this evening. The fifth anniversary of Hope Valley Mobile Food Pantry is coming up the thirteenth. Um and then one honoring um uh Rory and Erin Folksen from the Blue Bottle Cafe. Uh April nineteenth uh will be their their last serving at the Blue Bottle, and we are very um appreciative of more than almost twenty.
Some of us, some of us have tears.
Almost twenty years of of being a part of this community. So um on on the small gesture of of our thanks, but on on the head of council and our government to to honor them uh with April nineteenth being Blue Bottle Day here in the Capitol.
And when you when you think about, I mean, literally the day they opened.
Right.
They were this phenomenon. I mean, I'm looking at where are all those cars? It's something I already know.
No.
Extraordinary and for good reason.
Yeah, it's it's extraordinary, extraordinary service. You know. Um we we're losing your milk jam. I mean, I mean, th- they are going on.
They're still, they're moving on to their next.
They're moving on, yes. So it is good for them. It is it's good.
Work-life balance.
Yes, work-life balance.
Well.
I'm happy for them.
And when you hear, you know, Rory and Spike are over teaching and how.
Yes.
It's, you know.
And and having more time with her kids.
Having more time with her kids, so, yeah.
I'll 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 um I'll just note as we transition to our next um uh our our mayor, council liaison reports that, you know, members of our community, um there are so many awesome things happening here, you know, businesses opening, you know, things uh, you know, ending unfortunately, but after long, amazing tenures. Um if there are people or things that are deserving of special recognition, um please continue to let us know. Um we 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 love to make sure that everyone gets the the uh the due, whether it's a uh Eagle Scout project um uh or or uh an awesome business, uh please uh let us let us know and figure out, we can help figure out how we can support and uh and recognize uh these great things that are happening in our community, like Rory and Erin. Uh so uh with that, we'll move on to our uh council liaison reports. We'll go this side. I want to want to start. We'll go start with you.
Um so we'll start with the uh green team. Um the Hope Well Borough arm of the green team will be organizing our next uh community zero waste hotluck. That will be Sunday, June first, from five to seven at the train station, and all are welcome. That will be shared out in the borough email as well as via printed flyers and social media. Um and we are working um as the Borough Green Team on a sustainability direct mail piece who go out to residents um sometime in May, and this is paid for with our Sustainable Jersey Grant. Um I was um also gonna mention the Pollinator Garden Worships, but Marion did a wonderful job of that. Um so there is a second one happening April twenty sixth at the Mercer County Library. Um and that is it right now for the green team. Um I don't see anybody else here from from downtown Hope Well, um who, you know, they weren't able to come to Public Comment, but downtown Hope Well, which is an organization of all the local businesses, has organized an event on Saturday, May tenth, from twelve to four um with the Sowerland Conservancy. It's a mocktail crawl, which is a way of really getting people into all of in into all the participating businesses um and supporting the Conservancy. Thank you.
I've seen these cameras and I'm holding the flyer up to the camera, those are mine or watching a recording.
Yes, so just go to downtownhopewell.com.
And I think there's, if you're really fancy and watching on YouTube, there is a QR code here that will actually take you there.
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you. Deb, you want to go next?
Sure. Um so there's a lot happening in town um from a recreation and event perspective. Uh we've got uh the Easter egg hunt um being put on um April nineteenth. We've got a tree being planted for Arbor Day uh with the conjunction with the elementary school on April twenty first. Um May third and fourth weekend is a huge one in town. We've got um pancake breakfast, handmade Hope Well, uh opening day for the farmer's market and the park cleanup day. Um we're gonna be honoring of our residents um during the cleanup um ceremony, but I think we'll talk about that at the May meeting, we said. Uh Suzanne Hope Craft is retiring, so uh a group in town came together to um wanna pay tribute to her career and her contributions to the community. So um Skymore House was kind enough to buy a tree, whether it was plant, a tree in the park, and put a plaque and all kinds of good stuff like that. Um collaborating board met on um Monday, and we uh just a lot of good stuff going on. Um redoing all the personnel manuals and everybody's taking their required um library, uh state New Jersey library uh classes that they have to do to stay up to date. And um that's about it. Personnel, we'll probably talk about in there. Yeah, all good. Thank you.
First thing, I have doubts.
Sure. Um so mostly, we've been working on the CBRPC demo project that I spoke about earlier today. We also, it was only last week that we met with the county um representatives from the county and planning and engineering teams. I think I think half of the time, I think it was only last week, right?
Yeah, for Broad Street.
Yeah. Um so to discuss um putting a similar treatment as we're doing the demo project onto Broad Street, and they were, I would say, pretty amenable to it. Um the main issue that's gonna take our time process is that we are responsible for not only funding it, but the design of it. So we need to do a traffic study to make sure that we are making the best, the informed decisions for the intersection there and then also coming with the funding for it. But I think it's gonna be an exciting project once we can move it along. And um we also are going to be moving ahead with the field trip with the elementary school to Borough Hall to have the kids come here and learn about what we do here and hopefully take turn city of the dais and bang in the gavel. As I mentioned, my kids, whenever we have to come here to run an errand, they demand to come down here and sit here and and bang in the gavel. So I think it's gonna be a fun trip for everyone.
Okay.
Thank you. David, what?
Not too much your court, I the biggest thing this month was just finalizing the fact sheet on the um the contract to sell for the water system and getting that line. Thanks to everybody on the team for helping with that. Um you know, we were able to post that the day after my last council meeting, so that was good.
Yeah.
Um and in that vein, um still working on some additional analysis, some updated modeling of of, you know, financial projections on the side of, you know, if we keep the system, what would we have to do? What the rate impacts would be, and we have a better fix on that. So I have to circle back with with Brian Morris, our financial advisor on on that and with the water teams and um to, you know, to dust that off and put that together into a presentation uh for the public. Um and simultaneously, looking at our sewer rate structure because there may be an opportunity there to um lower costs for lower volume users. Our for our water billing structure, you know, we have a flat rate for the first two thousand gallons of water, but for sewer, it's the first ten thousand gallons. So that means if you're using ten thousand gallons versus five or two thousand, you're paying the same fee to be. So there are some opportunities there, I think, to perhaps um look at that rate structure. Um and so Reggie's given the data for twenty twenty four, so we can look to look at usage data and see what that works. So we'll model in there. Um and speaking of sewers, we just got some very interesting information from um David Smith at the Stony Brook Sewering Authority, which um so, you know, an ongoing issue with sewer collection systems, it's infiltration, inflow, INI, which is basically rainwater that's getting into the sewer system uh that shouldn't. And then obviously adding to the volume of of flow that has to be treated in the plant uh because we basically pay our gallon to treat it. So and all sewer systems, you know, it's sort of the opposite of our leakage problem with the water distribution system. This is what it's getting in as opposed to what it's getting out. It's always something. Um and so the Stony Brook Plant takes the flow, obviously, from from uh our our plant, from Hope Well. It also takes the flow from Princeton Farms and Hope Well Hunt. Um and they have their own INI problems, but anyway, so it's our responsibility to look at our collection system and find places where water is getting in. Sometimes little things are, you know, people, they break off their cleanup covers, you know, when they're mowing the lawn, little openings like that. But the more uh involved aspect that is putting cameras into mains and actually looking for places where water is coming in and so on, which we do periodically, but we need to look at this again. So that in my long-winded preamble, what I wanted to mention was, so during the drought last year, which was protracted and one of the most severe droughts we've had in many years, um the flow numbers at the sewage plant dropped dramatically below anything that we've seen in the last couple of decades. So what that's telling you, the difference between that and the normal flow during periods of rain is just how much the INI is. So um based on those numbers and and the the sewage put together a really nice letter, really good information that kind of explains this exactly. Um there is an opportunity potentially to, the the total plant capacity for for our our Hope Well plant is three hundred thousand gallons a day. Um it it's potentially within reach to get back forty or fifty thousand gallons a day capacity if we can mitigate the INI. And it's something that it 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 pays for itself essentially because your fees to the plant are based on flow. So um we're, Doug has already spoken with the Borough Engineer, and we're gonna get together with Dave Mize that can work out a plan to to you know, I mean, it it's been an ongoing issue that we've worked on, but I think we want to knuckle down a little harder this year. We've been talking about it for a while. Uh there's a real opportunity there. So uh that's it for all the things with pipes.
Thank you, David. Um and everyone, for uh this has been a big month of 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 work and effort for everyone uh on council, all our our volunteers in town. Uh on council, all our our volunteers in town, so very appreciative, particularly like March, where we've been so many times. So again, thank you, everyone um uh for 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 all your your hard work. Uh as a reminder, again. Um we'll we'll now officially update the website um into the sunshine, but again, we're not gonna meet next Thursday on April tenth. Our next meeting will be May first. Um planning board is also not meeting on the sixteenth, their second slot that was announced. Uh gosh, last night, uh at the planning board meeting, um though a subcommittee of the planning board will be meeting that night. Um and not um uh privately, it'll be a be assumed to to work on the affordable housing plan for the borough. If you've been following this, um the end of last year, we received our figures from the state. Uh in January, we uh determined as a governing body uh with our planners and 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 attorneys. That the thirty-nine units that the state assigned us is, we felt appropriate, and we um entered that into the state system by filing a, actually a lawsuit. Um to to confirm that, happy to report that that was not challenged. So uh at the moment, our our number is, as we determined, at thirty-nine units for the next next ten-year period. And our our next piece of that is to put together a plan of how we we feel that we're going to um uh accommodate that. And and have of those units of affordable housing um in town. Um so the subcommittee of the planning board is working with on that with the planner. And for for council and the public's benefit, uh it's uh possible that we might have a a preview or presentation at our May meeting. Uh but then likely, planning board would be looking at it in full at their May meeting, um which this is an odd month in uh come May. Where council meets before planning, the 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 first council meeting is the Thursday, which is the first, until planning board meets next month. But and then in uh June, likely uh council will get the final version of the plan and uh and enact it. So that can be done before the end of June.
Oh, the end of June is the deadline?
Yes. Yeah, um uh next um next office hours, at least Saturday version, or on the Saturday the twelfth. Not this weekend, but the weekend after, the twelfth at nine AM. Um and we we did the water update before. Um uh mentioned the uh April thirteenth event. Um. I wanna thank, we had a lot of residents after last month, and we talked about some of our problem properties, um kind of log um issues. Uh with some of our professionals. Um I I just wanna uh thank everyone that does help um paper our files for when we can. Uh take action on some of these problem uh properties. Um I, you this past weekend got several phone calls and texts. From the county that there was lightning in the area. That means that you've signed up for our OEM service. If you did not get texts and calls um that there was lightning in the area, that means that you should go to our website. Uh and sign up for emergency alerts uh from the Hopewell Valley Office of Emergency Management. We have an email system that many around you should sign up for that too, but that's how to get, that's how we'll send out things like our agendas for meetings. Uh the emergency alert would be um uh something that you want, hopefully, not get.
Maybe maybe just sign up for the text, as I mentioned the last time we we brought this up, you were getting multiple phone calls being like, it's with the.
Again, if you're signed up, you will know because all of your phones will have run um. June seventh uh will be the second annual first responder um Hopewell Valley Mayor's Awards. The three mayors are gonna have a ceremony again, recognizing our phenomenal uh first responders in in Hopewell Valley. Um uh April twenty-eighth, uh five thirty, Hopewell, um the school district has invited us as a governing body. Um to the elementary school, which is not so far for us to go, and not unusual for many of us to be there almost every day. Uh but uh to talk about their, to see the facilities as part of their um outreach about um upcoming uh capital repairs. Um I'll just ask, um if you plan on going, to let me and or Reggie know if we, if more than three of us plan to go. We'll uh need to do a sunshine notice.
Monday, the twenty eighth?
I believe it's a.
Twenty eighth?
Monday, right, yeah, but but it's followed by a school board meeting that they've been doing. Um uh next, um uh just on behalf of uh Anthony, uh who's traveling this month. Uh but uh if you're interested in helping um him uh or myself or council churches or library on an event. Uh program for um uh educating and assisting and supporting our immigrant communities, please contact Councilman Fuller. Uh who's working on that. I'll note that our library is uh reached out to for a um a a new possible uh speaker. Series on things about Hopewell, I don't mean history, but things about how Hopewell works, and I'll just ask each of you if you have thoughts on that. Uh we can collaborate um and uh try to um fill up a a help them fill up their um. One of their many excellent um um speaker series, and again, as as Councilman Weaver um mentioned. We're we're talking to school district about uh an educational event with the first graders. Um potentially coming uh to 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 here, and when we get that date, we'll let everyone know if anyone's interested in incoming as it comes together and and uh. Um being uh for that.
First graders ask a lot of questions, don't they? And I'm sure it's wonderful.
They're very satisfied with the answers.
Right, well, you know, it's a good thing to.
We will have copies of our municipal audits, our budgets for them to go through line by line. And again, one last time, Doug, um uh for you to report, just I wanna thank you for everything you've done this this month in particular. Uh between getting our budget together, um uh these last um couple of uh sprints. Uh with our water utility, uh it's been a very, very busy month, and just wanna thank you and your team for everything that uh that you're doing.
Okay, um as you mentioned, we've got our budget introduced, so that's great. Um we also were able to put together the um with Lisa and Diane, put together the procedures for the um financial. Requirements for the committee, the Seachute Committee's tree donation program. We got that all ironed out, so that's great. Just wanted to mention with the water system, just through March, we've had thirty-eight thousand four hundred thirteen dollars worth of water main repairs. Uh just for the first quarter of the year, so it's it's a growing problem. Last year, I think we were about thirty-nine, thirty-nine or forty thousand for the entire year. Um so it's it's been a rough, rough three months. The railroad station, oh, uh for the submission to the BP and everything, I just wanted to thank Lisa and everybody for all the work pulling everything together. Uh and getting that submission, and so that was um that was that was a great, that was a job well done. The railroad station, uh we have a meeting um next on the eleventh, which I believe is Friday. Uh to kick that off, get some scheduling done for that, to get back uh finishing up the project, you know, we got the other two grants, so we're gonna put that to work. Um the railroad station will need to close during this work, so once we have a schedule. I'm sorry?
When do we anticipate the closing happening again?
Oh no, after the eleventh. Yeah.
I was just saying, keep the block party uses it, so keep it a bun.
Okay.
She's serious.
Yeah.
Yeah, very serious.
You use use the parking facilities, right?
No, we use the building.
Oh, you use the building also?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, for to stage the food.
Yeah. If if there's not food and there's all that drink, we'll be in trouble.
That's a problem. So uh we put Public Works Facility Project, we continue to move that forward. Uh there's been some complications. Uh we do have the grading down now, and um we should have the pricing available, I'm hoping in the next week or two. We can meet with the building committee. Uh we we staked out where the new building is, the assigned new building, remodeled building is gonna be. So we can see the the limits of that. We're concerned about the trees that are there. One of the things we're doing is uh we're gonna have Barla come in and assess the trees. I mean, they've they've been there a while. We wanna see what the what the average life expectancy is of the trees, uh cause it's causing us some problems with drainage. Uh we gotta modify the drainage plan. Uh so we have a Plan B. If the trees are, you know, have another twenty years to go or fifteen years. Then we'll leave the trees and go with Plan B for the drainage, so we do have that. Uh but the building is gonna be, we're not building a Taj Mahal, we're just making it functional. Keep the rain off the employees when they're sitting and working, uh the leak, the roofs leak, and uh so it's uh, but it's gonna be a welcome addition. Um you know, for for the people that work in our public works.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hard Avenue, we're hoping to get that underway. Uh the contractor submitted all their submissions. They've all been approved by engineering. And uh so on or about April twenty-eighth, once we get a firm schedule, when they can break free and mobilize, uh you know, we'll get a message out. Uh Eaton Place, Eggy and North Lanning, um we're gonna get those paved. Uh we're just finalizing that. We got a grant for two seventy-two, which basically covers the entire project a hundred percent. Uh we'll have some engineering and inspection costs.
Right.
Uh one of the things that happened last year, uh the gas company uh ran a line down North Lanning.
Right.
Okay, so they were gonna come in and repave the road. So we met with them out there, what they're gonna do for us, since we have a grant for North Lanning. And we can all use it for North Lanning, we spoke with them, and they're gonna pave South Lanning for us, curb to curb.
Oh nice.
As a trade.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so we pick up uh, you know, we pick up a road. Elizabeth Town Gas, as I just mentioned, they're in town, uh actually doing a lot of work, seventeen borough streets are impacted.
Yeah, Model Avenue is busy.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say, my street starts tomorrow.
Yeah, so they're making uh making good progress. The the schedule's on the website.
Yeah.
Okay, um and there's also some contact information there, um both for Elizabeth Town and of course to contact us. I guess I'll leave it there. I think that covers the the bigger items.
And we caught up on the markouts for all the.
Yes, yes. Park says in out there and it's been, we've had a lot of leaking meters in the system, so they get pulled out for that.
Right.
You know, meters in the homes.
Right.
Um so Dave's been getting called out for that, and then also, there's a lot of, because of the age of the roads and the infrastructure that's underneath it. It's not, it's um. Um clay pipes and everything, so you don't pick them up, and they're abandoned. You don't pick them up when, you know, you're doing your markouts. Uh but when they, when the contractor hits them, they call us to come out, take a look to verify that it's not active and everything, so. Dave sometimes is running out there two, three times a day just to to verify that you can backfill it, you know, so that's been. So that's been, that's been a little bit of a challenge.
Yeah, well, that's important. I mean, if it's a storm under the line or something.
Yeah, we gotta fix it. Yeah, yeah, so, but we've been good. We haven't hit any water lines, water mains, everything's been good so far. Shouldn't have said that. Yeah, it's so, it's been good, so.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Um that'll reopen the meeting um for our second uh public comment section. Uh if you're interested in a question or comment, uh please feel in person, come up to the front uh to the lecture. Uh if you're on the online via Zoom, push the raise hand button, we'll uh recognize you and bring you over as a analyst, so we can see in the room. I'm seeing online, I'm seeing no one in person, uh so I'll take a motion. The second public uh meeting section.
It was me, I was first.
Yes, she was.
Thank you. Um with that, I'll happily take a motion to adjourn, again noting that our next meeting is May first. Uh the meeting that was scheduled next. Hold on, hold on, the the meeting that was scheduled for the tenth next week uh is uh being being canceled, so we had a a motion to have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Bear.